Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District Six.
Joanne Kogle, District Seven.
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor, John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor.
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council.
And city attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Well, good morning. This is the January 31st, 2023 council meeting. Our mayor Skip Henderson is a little under the weather. Say a prayer for him, then he'll be back soon. And we will begin our meeting as we always do with asking the blessings of our on the meeting and on our city. And we would like to call up Pastor Craig Bowers from Windbrook Baptist Church. Come and give us blessings, sir.
And we come today praying for this council. We ask you to give them wisdom. Lord, we pray that they would listen to you more than they listen to the voice of man. And boy, we can make our voice known. But I pray that, Father, for the sake of this city and for not just our generation, the generations that follow after us, their hearts would be in tune and submissive to you. Because, Lord, the truth is, they won't stand before man, they'll stand before you. And they serve as public servants, and this is going to be a challenging day in which to serve as a public servant. For all of our first responders, we are so very grateful. And every time we hear the blare of Asari, and we pray for those who are going to a scene that they don't know what they're going to encounter, and oftentimes put their life on the line, sometimes even pay the ultimate sacrifice. So we all play a different role in this community, and we are grateful for each person and these leaders. I ask that you bless them, keep them close to you, and that they would honor you for the sake of our city. And, Lord, we do lift up Mayor Skip Henderson before you. Put your touch on his body. Thank you for the ones that will have special recognitions today and for how this council seeks to honor those who serve others. And we pray that, Father, together, even with our disagreements sometimes, that we would be unified in doing what is best for our community. For we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pastor Bowers, please thank Windbrook family for sharing you with us today. Thank you. If you will join with me in the pledge of allegiance. Do I hear a motion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Okay, we have a proclamation this morning for Kendrick High School Future Business Leaders Phi Beta Lambda. And presenting this will be Counselor Tucker.
Good morning.
Somebody's got to come to the podium.
You can to the podium. All right. Good morning. It's always great to recognize the great work our students and our faculty do in our community. Whereas Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda is a nonprofit educational organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee, in 1942. And whereas this organization has grown now to encompass over 250,000 members and advisors nationwide in high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools. And whereas FBLA, PBL, is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through innovative leadership and career development programs. And whereas members perform community service activities and strive to build a student's understanding of the realities of the modern business world. And whereas FBLA teaches high school students basic business and leadership principles, and PBL helps university, college, technical, and business school students to make the transition from school to work. Now, therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of February 5th through 11th, 2023, as Kendrick High School FBLA PBL Week. Thank you all. I want you to introduce.
If you would, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the program, and then allow each student to come up and introduce themselves.
I'm Angela Landon, the FBLA advisor and business teacher at Kendrick High School.
My name is Zabre Mbuli. I am the secretary, I mean, the treasurer of FBLA.
My name is Angela Jones. I am the parliamentary.
I'm Ariana Bruton.
I'm Tiana Tarver, and I'm the secretary of FBLA.
I'm Jared Lacy, and I am the vice president of FBLA.
I'm John Apuia, and I'm the president of Kendrick High Schools FBLA.
It's great to have you all with us today. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mr. Landon, and thanks for all you do. And that's Sergeant Major Washington. He is very, you know, for some strange reason shy today. But I really appreciate all that you do. And, you know, they're always volunteering. They have a week long of events starting on this Sunday. They have, I know they've done community cleanup events, so I just appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, Ms. Landon, I got the proclamations for you. All right, we'll move into the city attorney's agenda now. Mr. Fay. I'm having difficulty with this thing. The screen's not coming up. Here we go.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We've got several items to vote on this morning. First one up is the rezoning at 1200 1226 Sixth Avenue. It is the Hayes petition is ready for action.
Do I have a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
All right. Next item is the 1947 Wenton Road property for a market. It's ready for action.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
All right. Next item is 8215 Cooper Creek Road. Single family.
Motion of second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
All right. Next item up is the auto shop at 4030 Veterans Court. It's ready for action.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Okay, it passes.
All right. Next item, we have one minor amendment requested by Counselor Davis on conditions nine and 10. Just some minor wording changes on that.
Yeah, what was?
The change.
Sure. Just read them out, I guess.
I'll read them. Number nine is no business signage or lettering shall be permitted except that the property owner may place a small sign on or adjacent to the front door for identification purposes. Number 10 is six-foot wood fence shall be required along the side and rear property lines. Oh, six-foot wooden fence shall be required along the side and rear property lines.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion on amendment, second on the amendment. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
With that, you can approve the rezoning.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the rezoning. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Sandra, did you get the second? You got it, okay, thanks.
All right, that all passed. And next item up is the UDO. This included the cryptocurrency and heavy manufacturing and condo condominium definitions, but it's ready for action.
Do I hear a motion? Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
All right. On number seven, the short-term rental, we've got a request for a small amendment on the high uptown district to go from five to 15 units. I think Counselor Davis was going to make that motion. This would allow, this would change the cap in effect that you're putting in the ordinance today. It would go from five to 15 units. And this is in the Mercer Medical School housing area there near Third Avenue. And of course, would allow students, family to come in.
And what's the name of that district?
It's High Uptown Historic District.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is that right? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. And the amendment passes.
Okay, and now you can take up the entire ordinance, which includes these caps on units and all the historic districts and permitting and definition of short-term rental revision, but it's all ready for action.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Second? Okay, sorry, I didn't see that. Ms. Counselor Craig.
Thank you. There was so much discussion last week on this, and it was so late that I think a lot of us have forgotten what the discussion was about. So can you just kind of remind us of what is in this ordinance so that we know what we're voting on right now?
We'll just run through each section. The definitions, you're revising a definition of owner-occupied property. That's the first paragraph. Then you've got standards for grant or denial of an application. And it's just a review of the application shall be conducted in accordance with due process and granted unless the applicant fails to meet the conditions and requirements of this chapter. Any false statements are ground for revocation. Then you've got short-term rental units. The sticker remains in for the time being on the window. And then the rental unit is limited to no more than two occupants per bedroom plus one additional occupant per unit. And there'll be no change in the exterior appearance, and a minimum stay is 24 hours. And then you've got the historic district limitations. Downtown Historic 35, Werikoba 20, High Uptown 15, as amended, Liberty 7, Waverly Terrace 16, Wildwood Circle 11, Wenton Village 27, Peacock Woods Diamond Circle 12, Dinglewood 2, and Winds Hill Overlook 26. And then permits are issued on a first-come, first-served basis as long as they're in good standing. And then a new definition for short-term rental unit that is sort of standardized. And that's basically it.
Counselor Thomas.
I want to go back up to section 4.9.7, the short-term rentals. I have a couple of problems with some of the language here. First of all, I've had a couple of people who have short-term rentals. The issue of putting their name and a name and phone number on the outside of their unit is a concern to them. And that looks to them what section D says can happen. I'm not sure how you well, I guess perhaps when you get your business license that it can somehow or another be transferred to the public safety folks. But, and those are the ones that need to know how to get in touch. Some of the ones who need to know. So that one is a concern. And I'd like for either Mr. Johnson or Mr. Pruitt or somebody to talk about that one. And the second that I have a concern about is section E, that is two occupants per bedroom plus one additional. Is there any time limit on that? Suppose it's a two-bedroom apartment down in the Mercer area, and they want to have people over for dinner, you know? Is there any kind of that one just seems to me to have, needs some more explanation. The fact that it says there'll be no change in the outward appearance of the building. I think I understand what the purpose of that is. But suppose I wanted to, you know, put up a fence, a picket fence around my I couldn't do that according to this, I can't change the outward appearance. So I'd like for Mr. Pruitt, if you would at least address some of those concerns.
Morning, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. In regards to the sticker, the intent with it, that it would just have a permit number, you know, it would not have any owner's information or owner's contact information on that sticker. We did have conversations and some concerns with some of the operators that had, you know, those privacy issues. So the intent is the sticker will just have the permit number, you know, just identifying it for any officers that respond to that unit that it is a rental, but then they would have to go to dispatch, go to the back of the house to get that contact information.
Well, I guess, Mr. Pruitt, the issue is anytime you put contact information on the outside of these dwellings, not only can public safety get it, but so could other folks who were not public safety, who could, who could be ultimately perhaps be, get acquainted with public safety because they had broken into this unit. But I just have a real concern about that. And I don't know, I know that when we put a sticker on your when you have a burglar alarm and you have to get it registered, there's a sticker that you put on the window, but there's no, there's no information on that sticker that people outside can see. So I just have a real concern about, about that piece of it. And I'm not sure what the solution is. But to my mind, the solution is not putting a sticker anywhere on the outside of the building that has personal information on it.
And that's, that is our intent, is just to have a permit number on the sticker, similar to those alarm registrations, just to have a permit number, not somebody's phone number or name. It would just strictly be the permit number on the sticker.
I know that at one point when we were talking about this, that the reason we wanted some kind of identifying information was in case I'm the neighbor and I want to call the owner and say they're having a party and they're, you know, 47 people over at your house. That would not be I would not be able to do that if it was just a sticker number, right?
Correct. There is, one of the other revisions was the requirement during the application process that the owner or agent of the rental notify the adjacent property owners that they intend to start a rental and provide all that contact information. So we're hoping that that notification process, you know, gives the neighbors the information they would need.
And is the, is the adjacent defined as the, just the right next-door neighbor?
Yes, currently.
So if the right next-door neighbor is also Airbnb, and I'm the third house down, I don't get notified?
That would be correct.
That's a concern to me, and I'm not sure how to, how to fix that. What about, what about the two occupants per bedroom?
So there, as I said, there is no time restriction, so it would be, directly would be everywhere. You know, the intent of the ordinance is just to regulate party houses in those creating disturbances. You know, so there wouldn't be, you know, people going around counting people in, in the units unless there was some type of disturbance.
Well, I, I don't know. I just, I really have a problem with, with that one too. What about the exterior?
That's intended for, you know, for signage, you know, changing if it's a single-family residence, you know, changing the appearance, you know, by putting signs up or advertising those types of things, not a fence or painting it or things like that. More making it look like a, like it doesn't fit in the neighborhood.
Well, that's not what this says. This says there shall be no change in the exterior appearance of the dwelling and premises.
Again, the intent is to prevent, again, making it look like a commercial establishment if it is in a single-family, family neighborhood. We have similar language related to personal care homes and those types of businesses that are running residential that, you know, is supposed to look like the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, I guess, Mrs. Mayor Pro Tem, this section, I think, needs some more work. And I'm not sure if we can, Mr. Attorney, pull this section out and do something with it. But I just, I'm just real concerned that some of the language in this section doesn't go as far as Mr. Pruitt has.
Well, if you want to pull the permit number sticker, you can. The two occupants per bedroom, I would not pull that if you want to get some caps and regulations in this ordinance. That's sort of a standard in the industry that we saw by looking at internet, you know, definitions. Mr. Crabbe, want to comment?
Well, am I completely off-base by saying that this would prevent me from if I'm the mama of a kid at Mercer Medical and he wants to invite his class over for dinner? He can't do that? Is that what this language says?
No.
I think, well, the city manager is next.
Yeah, Mayor, just to her point about notification, my thought is that perhaps you could have a language that the adjacent property owner that is not an Airbnb operation or something like that on either side. And that way, if you've got three Airbnbs together, they've got to notify, they got to go down until they get to one that's not an Airbnb, and then they notify them. So adjacent property owner or owners on either side, that is not an Airbnb.
Do I hear a motion to add that, or?
And what is that motion?
A non-Airbnb. Okay, the, are you?
Well.
Do you want to hear the other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Counselor Garrett.
My constituents in Werikoba and St. Elmo have voiced significant opposition. I have not had any support for any higher limits on short-term Airbnbs. We actually have an issue where there's certain blocks there, the nicer blocks around the park where almost the majority of the block are Airbnb. So I was just wondering if Mr. Pruitt, Director Pruitt, if you could tell me, is 20, is that already the number of licensed ones that are in there? And would that cap, would that cap be close to 5%? I know we're not doing a percentage, but.
Yes, I believe, so 20 is about, is approximately the number that are currently legally operating. There may be more than.
And that would be capped now? There wouldn't be new ones unless they lost their license?
Correct, yeah, I believe that's the, in the current proposed ordinance, that is the cap for that district.
Okay, I just, I have a lot of residents who are concerned because it seems to be, particularly in the Park District, it's not like downtown where it's mostly local owners. We're having more like out-of-town California people, folks that you can't get in touch with. So that's just the concern with the Park District.
Thank you, Sir. Counselor Kogle.
I think we just, I need to remind council that we passed the amendment, or we did the amendment just to put a hold on, just to get us through to the moratorium so that we can sort out all of these issues. So really, the, we're just looking at putting a cap on the 35 legal Airbnbs in the Historic District as well as the 20 operating, or legal, Airbnbs in St. Elmo. And then the alternate ones, we're just asking for an extension to High Uptown to 50, from five units to 15 units just to let those units that are already in play go get their Airbnb licenses so that in two weeks, when we have our first reading on the moratorium, we can sort it out. This is just to expedite that moratorium and put a cap on this so that we can figure out all the details later on.
And the moratorium first reading is today. That's the public hearing.
So, but it's just to expedite it an extra week or two.
And so are you saying that none of these will go into effect until the moratorium is passed?
No, this will go into effect today.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is that we can, we can I mean, we can pull, for today, we could pull D, E, F, and G out of there and just have the cap. And just deal with the cap, and then the more, in the moratorium.
Well, I think these are two very separate issues. I think these are two very separate issues. The discussion that we were having was on section 497, and the, the number of, of Airbnbs is in another section. So I would request that we finish this conversation before we move to the, to the numbers.
I think what, what the counselor's trying to say is that if we pass this today, we can work on these changes during the interim period. We can bring it back. This is a fluid document, it's subject to change. We can, we can make changes at any time. This isn't going to be permanent, so. But if you have changes today, we can certainly, certainly allow those to go through. If you want to pull those, if you want to exclude the items you were concerned about regarding.
Well, I just think that, that the language needs to be cleaned up. It needs to be more precise.
Well, I would recommend you leave in, for the time being, little subsection D and G because those are your occupant limits and your 24-hour. because those are your occupant limits and your twenty-four hour definition, which is consistent with the other definition. So if you want to pull out D and F for more discussion, that's fine.
I mean, I think that makes sense.
What's your pleasure? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, yes, this, you know, the way I view what we're doing here is, is, yes, Counselor Kogle is right. We're just expediting this a little bit, putting up a cap in some specific areas that, that are of concern right now, today. The rest of what, the moratorium is basically, it, it, this is a work in progress. Everything that's being said, you know, the way I understand is the staff is taking notes and they're working on a new document to bring back to us. That's the whole purpose of the moratorium, is to buy a little time to let the staff work on this and make the corrective changes and then bring it back to us and then we'll pass a complete ordinance. That's all, all it is instead of piecemealing it here at the table. But what we're dealing with now, and I don't mind, look, I don't mind taking them out, but I, what I understand is what's being said at the table, including Counselor Thomas's comments, is that planning is listening and they're going to go back and make the adjustments based on our concerns and additional concerns there as well. So, yes, it could come back as a document that's changed and those things are, are addressed. But at the same time, I don't mind taking some out today, but they may come back with a, a different rendition or so to speak of the language to, to address that. So that's really all we're trying to accomplish and I, you know, I, I think that's the right path to take. And, and certainly, like I said, I think staff is listening to all these concerns and they have some things that they want to address as well. And they'll bring us a document back. I don't foresee that the moratorium is going to go as long as ninety days, but it just buys our staff, who's extremely tied down with a lot of measures, buys them a little time that they can straighten it out and bring it back to us.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you, um. Attorney, um, please, my understanding of occupancy is overnight stay. So you can have guests, like, it, it says two plus two per room plus one, and that's two per bedroom plus one because occupants sleep there, but guests do not. So that's why the two plus one is for occupancy, but then you can have guests over. So like, in my properties that I manage, there's the occupancy of two plus one, but they have guests over. When they, at Christmas time, at Thanksgiving, at birthdays, they have guests over. And so, um, I don't have a problem with the two plus one occupancy, but if we're trying to say that the two plus one occupancy is to, um, limit, you know, the party houses, then we need more language in there to talk about how many guests cannot come over.
Well, I, I guess, uh, Counselor Crabbe, that shows my concern. When I read this, occupants to me meant people in the house, whoever they are, whatever their status is. They're occupying the house. And you're more legalistic, I guess, uh, is they're sleeping there. I'm not sure that the, that everybody understands the, that nuance. And so I'm hoping that Counselor Davis is correct, that the planning department is going to go back and bring us something that's a lot clearer than this, uh, but, um, I.
And so, something, I, I agree with you on, you know, if we're trying, what are we trying to accomplish with, with this, um, portion of the ordinance? And if it's to limit how many people or to limit it to be, not allow it to be a party house, then we need some additional language other than the two plus one, um, occupancy, in my, in my opinion. So I, I wanted to change my amendment, um, to where I'm just amending this to remove those three areas of concern so that we can go ahead and we can approve this for the caps today. And then we can always reintroduce, um, these portions of it later. So I'd like to withdraw my, my amendment and restate it to remove, um, D, E, and F. Are those the three that we were talking about? Okay, so that's, I would like to revise my, um, um, motion.
The City Attorney, she's amending her motion to withdraw D, E, and F.
D, E, and F?
Is that what you said?
Yes, so that we can go ahead and, and vote on the caps today.
That's the sticker, the number of occupants per bedroom and the change in the exterior appearance.
I'm wondering if, uh, Mr. Pruitt or Mr. Johnson has any comment on that?
If I could make a comment real quick, if we leave them in, we can talk about it during the moratorium and then come back and amend it. I think Counselor Kogle said that earlier, but we don't have to, we're not bound by this if we pass it today. We can amend it in ninety, within the ninety.
Right, well, we can amend it by bringing them back in, but this is going to make Judy feel, feel more comfortable about it and we'll get her vote.
I understand that, but at, at least we have something on the books today. We, if we take this out, you're not going to have, there will be no limit on occupants.
Well, that's why I was recommending you leave B in and this, study it and they can come back with a guest limit or a time limit on, uh, time limit on guests such as midnight, but those are things you can study. But I would leave in the, the number of occupants, it's.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
There's no, uh, there's, there will be no, no permit sticker on the window, there would be no, uh, you, you would allow changes in the dwelling appearance, that kind of thing, so.
Okay, that makes sense to me, so I, I withdraw that motion.
Okay, all right. So the original motion is to pass it as is, is that where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, and Counselor Tucker to the motion?
No, my, my question was, um, what's the, no, I was, as my timeline, when are we looking at bringing this back up, um, for discussion? I was telling, um, Counselor Crabbe, one of the things that I noticed in another ordinance, is it define bedrooms? You know, is it, can we send you some of the things that, you know, we've seen in some of the, you know, ones? Yeah, like a bedroom is not a kitchen, or, well, a room considered for occupancy is not a kitchen or a bathroom. It actually defines that within the ordinance. So it was some things that I researched and I just want to send it, but I wanted to see when we was going to bring it back.
I think Counselor Crabbe helped us with that last meeting, uh, regarding, uh, if you have a futon or a fold-out in a, in a living room.
It went into more details in the ordinance with the definition of what a room is because even with what Counselor Crabbe said, it didn't define that, uh, bathroom is not a room or kitchen is not a room.
Well, I think, okay, you've heard the comments, could you, when we come back, will you be working on that in the interim?
Yes, and Counselor Tucker, you can by all means send us any, you know, information that you have or, um, thoughts. You know, I don't, I doubt we would be ready at the fourteenth, February fourteenth council meeting, um, you know, but certainly the end of February, the first meeting in March, I think we could come back with an update or, you know, kind of give a status of where we are in, in those provisions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe, did you, okay, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I, you know, look, I'm no legal expert, but I think in the industry I'm in, we term occupancy as overnight stays. I believe, and I may be wrong on the dwelling side, it might be capacity is the limit. When you're dealing with life safety, you know, the number of people that can be in a building at any one time, I think is termed capacity. But occupancy, I think legally is, is deemed, is, is, the meaning of that is overnight, overnight, I believe. I'm not sure, but I'm sure that planning has heard the concern and they'll figure it out.
Is that right?
So in, in the building codes. The occupant load is the, the total number of people in there. So when we're calculating the occupant load of this building, you know, it's just the number of people in the building.
That are staying overnight, that are staying overnight.
Well, that's something y'all can look at, a definition of occupant or overnight stays.
Okay, I see no more lights on.
Thank you, sir. Um, maybe the capacity can be, um, based on not the number of bedrooms, but the square footage. So, so we set up some guidelines on occupants are based on the number of bedrooms and capacity is based on the square footage because it's going to change if it, by the size of the, the property.
Okay, no more questions, Mr. Pruitt, I think you, you have some suggestions and marching orders there. Uh, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second to approve. Yes, ma'am.
As amended.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
Okay. Well, the, uh, caps that are contained in the ordinance are effective today. Now, um, Mayor Protem, if you want to, we could pull up the, um, moratorium ordinance. I know we have one person that wants to be heard. This is item number ten on our agenda.
Now, item ten, it's a.
This is a moratorium not exceeding ninety days on the consideration approval of any application for a short-term rental permit.
Okay, um, do you give your name and address?
Uh, Teresa Alameen, thirty-nine, eleven Steammill Road, um. Columbus is a real estate town. Uh, I've lived here for twelve years. I'm struck by how many of you are in real estate and I think you all should disclose, uh, to the public who among you own rental property? Who among you might own Airbnbs? Because what I know is going on in Columbus right now is that the Airbnbs are being used as interim housing, as interim housing for people who are being evicted and are unhoused. And you are putting a Band-Aid on a housing problem in this community. I am stunned to hear the proliferation of Airbnbs over the last few years. I was talking to somebody in Lake Bottom a couple of days ago and she was identifying all the Airbnbs in her neighborhood. I watched last week's meeting when all those people were here from the historic district talking about all the Airbnbs in their neighborhood. It's becoming a town of many, oh, many motels, I think someone used that term. A ninety-day moratorium has to be linked to the fact that you have a lot of people doing business in the Airbnbs who do not have licenses. If you can't get control of licensing the people who are doing business as Airbnbs, how are you going to enforce a moratorium on Airbnbs? Everybody pops up and does an Airbnb whenever they want to. How can you enforce a moratorium on no new Airbnbs when you have people who are unlicensed and running Airbnbs? This is a ridiculous conversation. You're not dealing with the quality of life problem that is directly connected to homelessness, a fourteen percent increase in homelessness based on the United Way count. Eight children homeless last year, thirty-six homeless this year, that's what's been identified. You are not doing the people's business if you don't see the Airbnb problem as part of the larger housing problem. There's not enough affordable housing. I have never been in a city where so many ordinary citizens own rental property. Nurses, teachers, everybody owns rental property in this community, probably most of you. So, first of all, let's disclose how much real estate, uh, interest is sitting up here. That's what I want to hear. But this moratorium on an Airbnb, on the Airbnbs is ridiculous. You've got so many unlicensed Airbnbs. If you don't have a plan for what you're going to do in the ninety days to get control of the situation, you're wasting your time and you're diminishing the quality of life for the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. I know what's going on, I know what's going on. I have never seen so many homeless families in my life. They showed up last week at the library. We're going to come, we're going to come. I'm speaking on slum lords on the fourteenth, but this moratorium is a joke. You got Airbnbs unlicensed, you can't even force them to get a license. How are you going to stop people from establishing new Airbnbs? It's ridiculous.
Thank you, Ms. Alameen.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on item ten on our agenda? This is a ninety-day moratorium, will expire eleven fifty-nine P.M., Saturday, April fifteenth, unless lifted earlier. It's ready for any other questions, we'll vote on it on February fourteenth.
No other questions at this time.
Okay, we'll bring that back in February. Next item on our agenda, Mayor Protem, was the demolition ordinance. The property, Chicago Road, Fifth Avenue, Eighth Street, Lawyer's Lane, Second Avenue, Hamilton Road, Matthews Street. I think they're all still on the list and it's ready for action.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Motion, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
All right. Item nine is second reading on the court reporter transcript charges at fifteen thousand dollars and the career ladder for court reporters, just ready for adoption.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
All right, we've handled number ten. Eleven is an add-on resolution around the table. Our tax commissioner, Ms. Huff, was here earlier, but. Is she here, there she is. Um, this would delegate authority to the tax commissioner to refund penalty and interest paid on second installments of property tax.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Okay, so you, council has delegated the authority for tax commissioner to waive the penalty and interest. That was the first part of this equation that you had already done and now you've delegated the refund of penalty and interest paid on the second installment. So, Ms. Huff, you have that authority and you're good to go with that. Thank you for being here. Uh, Mayor, do you want to say anything?
No, I don't have anything to say for it. We'll carry out the responsibility as you have delegated to the office. Thank you very much, have a great day, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here. Mayor Protem, that's all of our business agenda for this morning.
Okay, and I don't think we have a public agenda, is that right? Okay, City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first I've got, um, the CCG, uh, Employ You Health and Wellness Facility lease agreement, asking your approval to continue a ten-month lease.
To the motion, Counselor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, if I might ask you, it's a ten-month lease, a continuance, is there, or is, are we looking at transition?
Uh, we are. Um, as you know, we acquired the Sonova's property, new City Hall, and, um, we actually want it less than ten months, but the minimum we could get by with is ten months, because we're gonna move into that City Hall and we do anticipate starting to transition in May of this year. And of course, this is gonna go beyond May, but we're gonna move the, uh, Health and Wellness Center into our new facility. Uh, are there any other questions on that?
No, sir.
Okay, so, um, next, I, I have got. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Um, next, I've got a couple of purchases, a side loader refuse truck bodies. Um, and, uh, we're asking to purchase, uh, additional options for refuse truck bodies, five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and eleven cents per unit. And for forty units, it's two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, uh, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, asking your approval.
Motion, and a motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
I've got.
And it passes.
And, um.
Motion to approve. B, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
And then I've got the comprehensive camera system that we've discussed many times, phase two and three, we're asking your approval.
Motion and a second, I'll second it, I'll second it, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
And, um.
Ms. Thomas, excuse me, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. City Manager, um, um, on the, the cameras, are we pretty much set on phase one? We've got all of those pretty much in place?
Um, I'll, I'll ask Deputy City Manager Goodwin to speak to.
Or if not, I know that, that they may not all be in place, but there are plans for where we're gonna do all of that.
Mayor Protem, if you will.
Ma'am, good morning. Um, yes, we do have those in plan. We have not completed one hundred percent, well, we're probably around eighty percent complete right now, but we of course know where all of them will be going before we start phases two and three.
Okay, so the, the plan is, is in place and then we, we're adding phase two and three?
Absolutely, that's exactly what's happening.
Thank you so much.
Great, Mayor Protem, that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll move into the clerk's agenda at this time.
Uh, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, if, if I may, I, I'm gonna, if you will allow me, I'm gonna, uh, have Deputy City Manager Goodwin, excuse me, Hodge, to talk about, uh, the tour today that we scheduled, talked to you about. Just want her to mention for the public the schedule.
All right, I need some help turning that mic on, this, this thing.
Okay, we got it, we got it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So we're excited about this tour today. We have selected just a few of our local developers to, um, talk to you about what's going on in their particular development. This is not an all-inclusive list. We have a lot of local developers here in Columbus, so we are gonna hit some of the highlights that's going on in Columbus. And I know I've left people off, so I apologize for that. Uh, we are going to, uh, leave the City Services Center, uh, go through Miss, um, Muskogee Technology Park. We'll have a representative from the Chamber, uh, in the Development Authority, talk about what's going on in the Muskogee Technology Park. We will go to Midland Commons, Chris Whiteman, developer, will talk about Midland Commons. Uh, we will go to Old Town, uh, Greystone Point, Will White will be joining us. Uh, we will stop at Comer, uh, for lunch, um, and we will go to the Mill District. Justin Krieg and Brad Turner will be joining us. Uh, we'll also hear from the Housing Authority about the development that they're doing. Uh, in the Mill District, we will go to Uptown here from Pace Halter, as well as Jason Gamash on the developments that's going on in the Uptown area. We will also take a tour of City Hall. You'll get to see, um, the under-construction City Hall, most of the third floor is almost complete, so you'll get to see, um, what's going on at City Hall. We'll also go down, uh, through Elliot's Walk and Camp David Arby Park before we return to the City Services Center. Um, and so when council adjourns, we'll give you about fifteen minutes. Uh, the bus is located out on this side of the building, uh, and we'll, uh, get the tour started.
And, um, we, uh, do, uh, encourage, uh, the media, uh, to, um, join us. Uh, they can, um, travel along behind us and if we've got room on the bus, they're welcome to get on the bus. But, uh, we are inviting the media, because, uh, these people just, and, and as the Deputy City Manager pointed out, this is just a short list of those who are investing in Columbus, Georgia every single day. And they're spending billions of dollars and creating jobs and, and, uh, just, um, making Columbus what we want it to be and we appreciate their investments and, and their love for our city. So, uh, we, we do want to allow them to show us exactly what they're doing. Uh, they're spending millions and millions in property tax and, and, and they're just good two and four Columbus. So, uh, we're excited about the tour that we're gonna take today.
I'm excited to see it and see the progress that we, that we, where we are today, so, looking forward to it.
So that concludes my agenda.
Okay, all right, now, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk? I guess if I turn your mic on, it'd help, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Counselor Barnes.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Item two, this is an email correspondence advising that the Hospital Authority of Columbus has selected Betty Tatum and Cynthia Williams Jordan to serve another term. Needs council's approval.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Next are minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion is second to receive the minutes, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will defer all of the mayor's appointments. Then we will have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. We have the Columbus Aquatics Commission, Ms. Jensen Melton.
Motion is second to approve, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Civic Center Advisory Board, Jennifer Teague is interested in serving another term. Mayor Protem, this is your appointment.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, thank you.
Next, we have the seat of Latasha Lee, she is interested in serving another term. Uh, Counselor House, this is your nominee, did you?
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. It passes.
We also have the seat of John, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, Ms. Counselor Crab.
I'd like to nominate Jacob Greer to, um, fill the seat for Keith Higgins. He may be confirmed.
Second, move, um, motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, thank you.
We also have the seat of John Boyd, he is not eligible to serve another term. This is the District Nine appointment. Thank you, Counselor Thomas. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, Counselor Davis is renominating Mr. Alfred Hayes and we will bring this back for confirmation. For the Building Authority of Columbus, we have the seats of Leela Carr and Vincent Allen, both are open for nominations. On the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, we have Mr. John Jackson, he is interested in serving another term, as well as Mary Quiller, if someone, a member of council wanted to, uh, place their name in nomination. Counselor Huff has placed both names in nomination. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, uh, Brandfull Carpenter, she is interested in serving another term, if a member of council wanted to place her name in nomination.
Already nominated.
Counsel, Mayor Protem Allen has placed that name in nomination. Uh, for Emily Flornoy, she is interested in serving another term. We would like to hold off on this one, this is the Uptown Business Association, uh, recommendation. We will bring that one back at the next meeting. Uh, we have the seat of Katie Bishop, uh, she's not eligible to serve another term. This seat is open for nomination. And Counselor Crab is nominating Jennifer Lamb, Lamb, for the seat of Claire Berry as the Board of Realtors representative. And she may be confirmed for this meeting.
I hear a motion and a second to approve Claire Berry. I'm sorry, Jennifer Lamb for Claire Berry. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Next, for the Planning Advisory Commission, the seat of John Steed, he is interested in serving another term, if a member of council wanted to place his name. I'm sorry, was that Counselor Huff? Okay.
Counselor Crab.
I have a question for you, Ms. Davis. Um, there's certain boards that employees serve on and then I've been told that there's certain board, there, that employees cannot serve on boards. So can you clarify for us the boards that employees can serve on? And then I would assume that any that you do not state, employees cannot serve on those boards.
Yes, uh, Counselor Crab, as a general rule, city employees are, uh, not allowed to serve on city boards. However, uh, as I stated, there are exceptions to that rule. We have certain boards that are slated specifically for city employees to serve on. Uh, the ones that come to mind is the Employees, um, Health Benefits Committee, the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, uh, four fifty-seven Compensation Deferred, uh, Board. So those are employee-related type boards. And, uh, I do know that Crime Prevention also has, uh, city employees that serve on it and so.
Okay, so for clarification.
Yes.
Um, Circle cannot have an employee on it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, Counselor Thomas.
I didn't wanna, um, speak to, uh, Counselor Crab's, uh, question. For example, the, um, Crime Prevention Board that, that the city clerk, the clerk mentioned, the, the employee who serves on that represents public safety. So i- it's not just any seat on that board, it's specifically, I, I think I'm correct, am I not?
That, that is correct, Counselor Thomas, that's the law enforcement. A member of law enforcement serves in one position on that, on the Crime Prevention Board, so that is correct.
And so they would be, uh, an employee of the city. But i- in any, in any board, I would assume that, that it has to be, if an employee serves on the board, except for the employee committees that, uh, the clerk, um, spoke of, it has to be named in the, um, board.
Yeah, designated.
Authorization, that, that person is there. Now, e- each one of those committees, however, should have a, an employee advisor uh, of the, the department or somebody that works with that group, uh, but not a voting member, an ex officio member.
That is correct.
Counselor House.
And thank you, Mayor Protem, just a, a question for clarification from my understanding. Uh, for the, the people that we nominated for the Historic and Architectural Review, who are gonna vote at the next meeting, so then Jennifer Lamb was nominated, is that right? Or was she elected to the board?
She, she could be approved and that's why the motion was made to approve her.
But the others were just nominated?
Because the ones that are on, um, the ones that are representative of organizations, the council may approve those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and there are no more questions, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye, and we are adjourned. Thanks, thank you.